Bobby, do you want to create a permanent picture for the project? Maybe we can use it as a test.
If I may add, you know, one big advance in this is supposed to be the ease of changing. So I think staff has been a little reluctant to go live with it because they're afraid that maybe commission wanted to change it. But now we see that those changes can be made relatively easy. So even if we go live, so to speak, there's still the opportunity to change it. So the ease of use is not a big feature.
Don, do you have any further personnel?
Now we have to old business. Is there any old business?
I have a piece of old business. We haven't talked trash in a really long time. Just a couple of things. I've spoken with some landlords who have Spanish-speaking residents who are having a hard time understanding the program. Would it be possible for us to produce any translated material for them?
We're in the process of that right now.
Could you mind coming up front first?
I've got another question or two as well, just as well.
We're in the process of that right now.
That's great. Thank you. That's awesome. A gentleman raised concerns about finding his property tax receipt taped to his trash can.
We don't have access to those.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't our policy. That's all. And I don't know if this is actually happening or not, but my impression is that carts that are overflowing and violation of the ordinance are getting the oops tag, the warning tag, but are also not being picked up. If, so correct me if I'm wrong, if this isn't happening, but if, let's say there's a 65-gallon container that's full, overflowing, even mounted up so the lid is propped over, I mean, it's literally mounted up over the top of the can, or maybe just backed out to the side. I would assume that we're still picking up 65 gallons worth of garbage if folks are paying for it.
It's my understanding that if they can lift it and move it, then they'll pick it up.
Okay.
I've not heard anything different. But by ordinance, is the lid supposed to be closed?
Of course. Sure. There was a lot of talk about, you know, cutting people to some degree of slack when the program goes into effect. And we don't want to do anything in violation of the ordinance, obviously. But in an instance, in an instance, if the cart's, the problem is that if there's an instance where the cart is hard to move or hard to get into the truck, I'm going to say it's a 65-gallon cart that has 20 gallons worth of trash, you know, packed into it and spilling at the top. If we don't still pick up at least 65 of those gallons, especially 65 of those gallons, then it seems like there's a problem there. It's only going to be exacerbated. I'm just putting that on the table. I don't, I mean, I don't even know what the solution is. Is this a problem that you all have to deal with, or is this not even, not even happening?
I think it's happening. I'm just, are you telling us to pick it up?
Oh, I'm not telling you to do anything. I'm just trying to figure out what the problem is, whether or not there actually is a problem and if there is anything we can do about it.
I think the ordinance says if the can isn't presented as per the ordinance, we're to tag it.
You all are just implementing ordinance.
Yes, sir. And in the tag today with fish down, a lot of tags for public education purposes. And we've been getting a lot of calls of concern, is this going to be in my record? But that's not been the purpose of these tags. It's just two-way communication back and forth. The effective date, February 1, month of January, was just to have that communication back and forth so that there was hopefully no surprises coming in February, so that they can understand the program. And the Spanish-speaking, I think, would be a big help as well.
I think you all are doing your jobs and doing them well. I only bring this up because I got a couple more calls about all the garbage that's set out kind of week one in Ridgeview. And that's something I think we've all gotten calls about for a long time. This is a problem that pre-dates paper.
Ridgeview or Ridgewood?
I guess Ridgeview. Ridgewood.
Any Meadows?
Ridgeview, Ridgeview, you know, all the apartments on Ridgeview. I've just heard, you know, I've heard that it's common for folks to reuse. I haven't, I haven't gone out there since I got the calls today to go check it out. I have lots of complaints about, well, folks, folks, if they're trash out, you know, days in advance in Ridgeview, is this going to be a problem? Is that the other? Is that, I assume that's the kind of thing that are the current enforcement officers going to deal with?
Yes. If it's out beforehand, it'll be in violation of ordinance as well.
Thanks, guys.
Commissioner Head, do you want to press?
I had something for old business.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I guess you dismissed. Okay, continue, Ms. Head.
Thank you. Mr. Mueller here. With your department and your great work that you've done with the abandoned property list, I just had a question. Thirty, of 110 parcels that contain three or more years of delinquent taxes owned, 39 of those 110 are vacant or non-occupied. The next step of that is, when do we start looking at demolition?
We only look at the ones for demolition when the structure itself is unsafe or it has significant exterior and interior structural problems. Typically, when we have second-line Florida.
I had a citizen calling and say that he thought it'd be a good idea sometimes when it comes to demolition of some of our properties, if we sometimes use it as fire training. And I don't know if that's something that you want to look at, if your departments want to talk about that.
We typically advise the fire department when we have a project, and they will contact the owner and get permission or not permission to do that. I know they've done it in the past, a few of them. Some of them, they're not able to get a hold of anything. But the owners have to, because when we demolish property, we don't take over ownership of property. So we don't have control of that. The owners would have to give that permission to their fire department.
On the property?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But it is, and it has worked in the past.
That's all.
Just a second. Any other old business?
I see none, but move on now to new business. New business? All right, we're going down to discussion items. Mr. Gordon. Thank you, Mayor. The business has talked for a long time about the value of having a wellness program available for city government employees and those covered by our insurance. And we put a whole lot of time and effort been put into this. And I think Mr. Don Hugh and those who have worked on this, and we've had a lot of recommendations from a lot of individuals. So we're finally to a point of being able to present something tonight for the commission to consider. So, Mr. Don Hugh, would you introduce our guest? The city's workers, excuse me, Randy, department heads who will not be involved in future discussion items may leave at this point.
They could stay or couldn't leave?
Certainly may stay. I didn't hear a word. I thought I'd hear a cherry. The city's workers over here with Wells Fargo Insurance Services as a broker, and they basically advise us on things related to our health insurance, our workers' compensation. And we've been talking about one of those for a couple of years and trying to figure out how to get something off the ground, given our staff and our resources and our particular situation. And I've got here tonight Darryl Hoof and Norma McDowall from Wells Fargo. You recognize them, they've been here before for health insurance presentations. And I think they're here for, to provide information about wellness programs. The city's next step in this is we've got to decide what our commitment is. And I don't want to steal Norma's thunder, but, you know, we've got to decide what we want to do, what we're willing to put our employees through, what kind of carrots and sticks we're willing to do to make this wellness program work, and what kind of resources are needed to make something like this work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Norma and Darryl, and they can present some information.
What I tried to do was to do a 10,000-foot view, but to put together what you need to do to think about if you want to do a wellness program, and a result-oriented wellness program, because I think that's what you ought to be looking at. Couple of things that, you know, we all know that healthcare costs just keep skyrocketing. So it's a way to control your costs. Costs are not going to go down with technology and everything that's out there now. Your costs are going to go up with healthcare reform. Wellness is a big tool with healthcare reform. You know, if we can get to things early and catch things early, we can control the cost. So the wellness program is something that I think that, you know, if you all are committed to do it, and it's, we keep, well, I keep saying that a lot, is commitment. But I think from you all, I think you all are interested in trying to control the costs and figuring out the ways to build this program. What I did was go to the Wellness Council of America, which has been active since the 90s, developing these programs. And they've got a list of seven talking points that, how you develop your wellness program, how you go about it, and determining what you want to do. So if you look on page three, as Randy and I've said, and I'll probably keep mentioning it on and on, you have to decide what your commitment is. If you're going to make a commitment to do it, it's not something you can just do for a year. If you want to have long-term results, you've got to make a commitment, you know, three, four, five-year commitment. I mean, it's a long-term commitment. And once you make that commitment, within that commitment, then you've got to decide, are you going to budget for it? What type of budget you're going to have? And, you know, how in-depth you want this program to be. And I think those are the things that the starting point. I think you guys are interested, you all want to do it. So just trying to pull it together to decide, you know, the resources that you're going to have to pull together, and where you're going to get the resources from, you know, if you're going to budget, you know, decide about staffing, internal, external, what type of program and the timeframe, and how long you're going to go about it. And part of the success of the program is bringing the right team together, because you want to customize this program to be what's right for your environment. And that takes engagement from probably an outside source as well as Fargo. We can bring to you all, and I'm sure you all have some resources, of other vendors or people out there, that that's what they do to do wellness programs. You know, a biometric screening company that kind of takes all your data and puts it together and gives you an executive summary and helps to distill all this information to see what you need to do within the program. An internal staff, you can make your mind up, do you want to hire somebody for a position? Or do you want to use somebody internally and designate them your wellness guru? And then a wellness team. Most all your successful teams takes people within your environment, and you build a team together, because nobody knows better what's going to work within your establishment than your own employees. So, you know, that's another piece of it. The other thing is collecting the data. We, as your broker, we have all your claims data and your demographics and all that information. We can pull that together. But the other thing is that you have to think about is, with this wellness program, is what kind of interest do your employees have? You know, I think all of us know, I mean, every year, everybody probably has the same thing, you know, everybody wants to eat better, get more exercise, you know, and take better care of themselves. I mean, we all want to do that, and sometimes it's hard to do that. So if you, excuse me, if you do that within your organization, you know, you can get buy-in during working hours, and there's a lot of things that you can do within your resources internally. And, you know, use people that can help mentor other people, people that are already at this level, you know. And then there's people that maybe want to reach this level, what would be good candidates for a wellness program. They buy into it, people see results, and it's a successful program. You know, the other thing is, when you collect your data, you'll want to do a health risk assessment of your employees to see where their health is to start out with, and the screenings, I talked about the biometrics. And then, you know, an overall knowledge of what your employees, you know, what do they know about nutrition, what do they know about smoking cessation, exercise, you know, all those different things. I mean, you can find out what your environment is and where you need to start to educate people. You can get a detailed program, not only do it on the medical side and the physical side, you can go and incorporate ergonomically, you know, for your workers' comp issues, look at, you know, the environment, you know, the buildings you're in. And you can really detail this. But in order to do this, you've got to figure out what you want to do, where you want to start, and what you want to incorporate. You know, wellness programs, I think, you know, if people that have done them for years realize that it helps with your workers' comp, it helps with your absenteeism, your disability. So there's some, you know, controlling your costs and all these other things come from a wellness program. So I think there are things that, you know, in your commitment, you kind of have to figure out what areas you want to tap into and start in those areas. You need to develop a mission statement, so you can figure out, you know, where you want to go, set goals that are measurable, timelines, your budget for each of the areas that you want to tap into. And this is the real detail and the guts of your program to make it successful. And that team, those people involved in this, will help pull this all together to make it happen, because your internal team will be the one that will be the success of the organization. I mean, those people will be the one that get out, talk to other people, and promote it, and you get buy-in from your employees. And then, you know, once you get all this information, you need to be able to evaluate it. You need to have a starting point, pull it all together, evaluate, you know, the successes that you've had, areas that you want to tap in, where maybe you look at your claims data and see there's certain types of disease management that you want to tap into, you know, whether it's diabetes, certain types of conditions, things that you can control. But those are the things that you want to do to look at so that you can have a results-oriented wellness program. And as Randy said, promotion, your incentives, you know, people like to have rewards, you know, maybe you base this, we talked last year about when we made a few changes to the medical plan, maybe you tie this into the people that are involved in your medical plan, that you give discounts if you, you know, you participate in a wellness program. That's what they've done at Wells Fargo, they did that with all their employees this year. If you participate in a program, you get some monies, you get some discounts. So that's just incentives. You all need to decide what kind of incentives you want to give, if you want to do any. An incentive-based program is usually the most successful, but you have to figure out what you want to tap into and how you want to promote that. Tying it into your medical premium is a good thing. A lot of people do that. And look at this program of the things that, you know, as we said before, you know, nutrition, smoking cessation, stress management, all these things that makes a well-rounded employee. And it promotes a better morale within your organization. You know, they're your resource, you know, you need to invest in them, you know, and you care about them. You all care about them because of what the benefits you've provided for them for all these years, and how that you've given them the things you give them. And this is just another volume too, so they'll have a more well-rounded life. And I think that, you know, if you're, you know, you all make the commitment, because it's going to have to come from you all, you make the commitment, you know, your employees will realize that, you know, you're investing in them, you know, for the 24/7, because if a happy employee becomes a healthy employee, you're going to get a better work environment. And that's why you need to really kind of support whatever you decide to do and whatever level you decide to do, and continue that, and don't let anybody drop the ball, and constantly keep reevaluating that. That internal team, along with you all, just to keep on to seeing where the results are and make sure you keep having results. If areas, things are falling down, how can we pick it up? What type of communication are you going to do in your environment? Going to do lunch and learns? I mean, you know, you need to reach every location, and because you have so many people in so many different locations, you've got to figure out a way to be able to tap into all your employees. You know, then, you know, the other thing is, once you've done this and you get it all together, you need to track all the outcomes, like when you start, what your claims are when you start, then, you know, six months, a year down the road, see that. If you have an outside vendor, they'll look at the areas of, you know, if they do biometrics, to see if there's any difference in the testing, you know, weight loss, a lot of companies do that Biggest Loser contest, you can see any results in that. We in our office did just a walking, we had pedometers and to see if everybody get 10,000 steps a day, because that's what your average walk is, what you should be walking a day. And there's all kinds of things you can do that's cost-effective, doesn't cost a lot, but builds morale, and you engage employees in that. And like I said, you know, the return on investment is a control, even if you just tap into one or two people that's got a condition out there. It's amazing, when we did the open enrollment meeting, when you ask people, how many of you all go for your annual physical? How many people don't do that? So maybe you incentivize people, oh, hey, people, it's free, you know, it's paid at 100%, you need to have, you know, go once a year, so you can establish a baseline, incentivize these people somehow to do that. I think that's the only way you're going to can control costs, because you'd be amazed that people that don't know they have conditions going on, because they never go to the doctor until they really, really get sick. And that, and on the back end, then it's too late, somebody has a heart attack or a stroke or something like that. So I think, you know, what I tried to do was try to outline what a program is, where you guys would kind of have a starting point of how much you want to move forward and engage, and what type of commitment you want, because I'm sure there's going to be a budget commitment, and then the internal commitment, you know, staffing and how you want to proceed with that. We can bring in people and vendors, like I said, I'm sure some of you all know other people. I think you've got resources, we might be able to tap into local, your local hospital, you know, maybe the health department, some other people, to partner with them to control the costs also.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
I just want to add to, first of all, thank you, Ms. McDowell, thanks for coming out here. Just to add a little bit to what Ms. McDowell said, at Roden, where I work, my day job, about two or three years ago, we began trying to put in some wellness programs. And one of the ways that we started was with developing an employee health committee. And that committee would explore the various options and begin the process of implementing some of those steps. One of the things that we did was the Virgin Health Miles Program, which is a company that will provide you a pedometer and gives you certain rewards based on how many steps that you get throughout the year. And the employees seemed to really like that and thought that was a beneficial program. We've also had health days, where the health committee or volunteers in the office would bring in lunch, and they would all be healthy meals, we share healthy menus and easy recipe ideas. So there's just a lot of, we also do health screenings every year, where we can track, you know, what power, what charts are looking and so forth. So there's a lot of leeway, I think, and I think she's right, it is however much you want to go into it. But one of the things that I would recommend is, from starting out here, is really go directly to the employees, because she's right, they know where the issues are, they work here every day, and get their ideas, and really let them help develop this program, because it's not just for me, it's for everybody in the city. And I think that was a good way that Roden used to start, and it would probably be a good way for the city to do the same thing.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, I know we have the program with 24/7 fitness, the $8,000, whatever we spend on employees to use that facility. How many employees are participating in that right now?
I really don't know. We could probably get some reports from active business, but I don't.
Okay. It'd be good to see, I think, just stay away.
I'll get that.
But I also agree with Commissioner Turner that this isn't a planned order for us. These spaces up here are going to change. Places back there aren't. The employees need to be involved in this process, at least maybe setting up an employee task force for wellness, and probably people from each department coming up, being involved with that, and then you guys coming back to bring that to us. I think that's, that's an option, seem like, okay, employees are willing to.
Thank you. Commissioner Roden?
Very supportive of this concept, thanks how much of what we do these days. As far as I'm concerned, this is a cost control measure, especially seeing how we self-insure. So I guess my only two cents would be to have, I would find that margin of cost-effectiveness between expenses to pay off.
This is a comment, you hit on it here, wellness is a big deal. In like 1976, I was in Atlanta Airport, when Agent and I went to book rep. And I have a book entitled, Live Longer Now. This book was a compilation of research that had been done on the aging process. And I believe, I've been talking about this a long time, but in essence, what it says, the studies were done during the Korean War, because that's the first time that you had an international army working together, you know, fighting in bold. And they do autopsies, various nationalities, they discovered that the American troops, 19 years of age, already had signs of aging. Others, Orientals, Turks, some others did not have that. Which led to further study, led to finally, just so much emphasis on cholesterol. And thinking, now I'm going to quit this, I'm not going to talk, I'm not just, for instance, the Japanese, they did not show the aging at this time, because they had active lifestyle, but the Americans had a sedentary lifestyle. So then they felt, well, the Japanese, then, it's something that has to do with, you know, inheritance genetically. So, but then they wanted to do another study, because many Japanese had gone to Hawaii. So they did a study of the Japanese that had been in Hawaii for a period of time, growing the whole day had cholesterol. And so what happened to become this thing about living longer now? Has to do with what you say, what you said. Your diet, exercise, things, and it pays off in the long run. So just speaking myself, I'm giving much longer, but this is, wellness is a very important thing. And I believe, Mr. Gordon, y'all, that within eternal, our internal community structure community structures, we have opportunities made to put together, maybe, you know, some kind of team to look, do you can look at these kind of things?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, we've gathered a, a lot of, uh, information and had support from a lot of sources, uh, including, uh, the local health department and the state health department, which is very active and supportive of, of this type of programs. And they're, we're trying to, uh, assimilate, uh, and do this, uh, at least cost possible. And we have identified a lot of...